All here. All right. Meeting will come to order and we'll have the minutes. I'll have a motion of the minutes on June 8th.
Move to accept.
Second.
That was, who was the second?
Matt.
Matt. Okay.
Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
And Mr. Fay votes yes. And Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. Laventure votes yes. Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Ross votes yes. And Dr. Fenby.
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
The motion is passed and the minutes are filed. Next, we have Chair's business. And this is something that we can postpone till the end of the meeting because we've got a lot of people waiting for public hearings. But in talking with Sean Fay, we were feeling that there were a number of things that around our subdivision, because we do them so seldom and everyone seems unique, we don't have a written protocol for how we go about it. And I know Krista's got some stuff written down. And I know the engineering department has some stuff written down. But, and Krista has given us one list of how we do it. Thought that maybe at some point, we might sit down and make sure we're all on the same page about this. So if it's all right with everybody, we'll push this back toward the end of the meeting so we don't bore people with procedure. So moving on, we've got an A and R. And this is Cimarrano Drive. We have.
George, are you muted?
Have a letter from engineering.
George needs to unmute.
How did I get muted?
I don't know.
I don't know. It's, my wife's not here. Dear Dr. Fenby, pursuant to the request of the planning board on June 8, 2020, our office has reviewed following plan, two sheets, plan of land Marlborough's known as Green Meadow. The purpose of this plan is to combine three parcels, map 116 parcel five containing 15.835 acres and having a total of 200.02 feet of frontage on Cedar Hills Street. Map 116 parcel 11 containing 8.95 acres and Marlborough having 216.16 feet of frontage on Cedar Hills Street and 6.32 acres in Southborough having 410.62 feet of frontage on Northborough Road in Southborough. F116 parcel 12 containing 15.76 acres and having a total of 1,706.95 feet of frontage on Cedar Hills Street and Cimarrano Drive. And divide the combined parcels into five lots. Four lots located Marlborough, lot containing 10.160 plus or minus acres, four, 142,567 square feet and having a total of 553.22 feet of frontage on Cimarrano Drive. Lot two containing 11.797 plus or minus acres, 513,884 square feet and having 25 feet of frontage on Cimarrano Drive. Lot three containing 11.445 acres, 498,534 square feet and having 216.69 feet of frontage on Cedar Hills Street. Lot four containing 9.616 acres, 418,815 square feet and having a total of 1,338.13 feet of frontage on Cedar Hills Street and Cimarrano Drive. And lot one located in Southborough, one lot located in Southborough rather, lot five containing 6.31 plus or minus acres, 274,920 square feet and having 410.62 feet of frontage on Northborough Road and Southborough. The Marlborough properties are located in the limited industrial zone and have the option being developed under the 650-36 Executive Residential Overlay District. Lots one, three, and four will have adequate area and required frontage, meet the lot shape requirements, and have present adequate access for buildable lot in the limited industrial zone. Lot two has the required area but lacks the required frontage for a lot in the limited industrial zone. Lot two may only be developed under the Executive Residential Overlay District, which requires no frontage and therefore does not need to meet the requirement for lot shape or present inadequate access. A notice been placed on the plan which states, quote, "Lot two is not buildable lot under limited industrial district requirements but is allowed only under the provisions of the Executive Residential Overlay District EROD," unquote. Where lot five is located entirely in Southborough, the Marlborough Planning Board endorsement of this plan would only pertain to lots one, two, three, and four. The plan will require endorsement by the Southborough Planning Board as well. Should you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Timothy F. Collins, Assistant City Engineer.
Is there any discussion from the planning board? There is none. Is there a motion to accept and file and endorse the plan?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Wait your second.
My second.
Okay, that was from Chris. So go through our procedure again.
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
And Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. Laventure votes yes. Mr. Ross.
Yes.
And Mr. Ross votes yes. Dr. Fenby.
Yes.
And Dr. Fenby votes yes.
All right, then. The plan is passed and somebody will have to sign this.
Before we move on, I have a question for Krista. Did, Krista, did they give us multiple copies of this plan to sign? Because we have, this is going to have to be recorded in, in Middlesex County and Wester County.
Okay. I think I only have two here. I can request additional copies if that's the case.
I mean, it's up to them. They, they, they would have to wait. I don't know if, I don't know if original plans are returned when you file them. Chris, Chris Flood, are you on?
Yes.
When you file a subdivision, A and R plan or subdivision plan with the registry, do you get the originals back?
No, they keep the mylars.
So we're going to need two, I think, two to sign because I think the Wester County one is going to have to be endorsed by both.
Okay.
I think. Ask them if they want them both signed, I think.
And Matt, did you make the original?
Counselor Fay and I were at the same time, so I'm not sure who you recorded as making the motion, but we both kind of said at the same time.
Well, I'll defer to, to Mr. Elder because he's younger and has less virus concerns.
See you tomorrow, Matt.
I will be there. Thank you, Counselor.
All right. The next A and R has to do with Helen Drive.
One moment.
Madam Chair, I have a conflict on this matter, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Somebody else had a conflict. Chris.
Chris also has, I'm going to recuse myself also for being friends with the applicant.
Okay. So we have a letter here from the engineering.
We A and R.
Excuse me, we still have to do a presentation?
Ah, all right.
One moment. You seeing the plan?
Yep.
Yeah.
And who's doing the presentation here?
Chris Flood.
Okay, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Fenby. Greetings, board members. My name is Chris Flood. I'm an attorney here in Marlborough and I'm representing Nancy Hoff of the Nancy Hoff Revocable Trust. She lives and owns 174 Helen Drive and William Shea. And Mr. Shea owns 184 Helen Drive. These are adjacent properties and 184 is actually at the corner of Helen Drive and Farm Road. These people are looking to redraw their lot line to conform to the way it's actually used on the ground. A small triangular parcel that's close to the driveway of 184 will be transferred to 184. And a parcel out back, which is about 475 square feet, will be transferred to the Nancy Hoff Revocable Trust. And so all this is doing is really just correcting the lot lines for these parties and it makes sense. There is one added benefit. Bruce Salick, who completed the plan, told me that house number 174 was previously non-conforming and now the rectangle that is required under zoning now fits inside the property to 174, making that now a conforming lot. It was just sort of an added benefit to that. I'm happy to keep my client, my comments short tonight, but I can answer any questions regarding the plan that you have.
I think that what we need to do is to read the letter next and then we'll figure out what we need to ask you.
Thank you.
We A and R 174, 184 Helen Drive. Dear Dr. Fenby, in the interest of expediency, given the summer schedule for the Marlborough Planning Board meetings, I have reviewed the following A and R plan submission and offered the following comments for the Marlborough Planning Board meeting to be held on June 22nd, 2020. Plan of land 174, 184 Helen Drive. The purpose of the plan is modify the property line between two lots on Helen Drive in the following manner. Lot one, map 85 parcel six, 184 Helen Drive containing 20,757 square feet and having a total of 363.45 feet of frontage on Helen Drive and Farm Road. Subtracting 475 square foot parcel B from this property and adding it to the property at 174 Helen Drive, adding 426 square feet parcel A to this property, having been subtracted from the property at 174 Helen Drive. As a result, the frontage for lot one increasing by 15.26 feet to 378.71 feet and the area of lot one decreasing by 49 feet to 20,708 square feet. This plan is also correcting an error in the area for lot one as shown on recorded plan number 350-1961, which created the lot. Lot two, map 85 parcel five, 174 Helen Drive containing 20,160 square feet and having a total of 125 feet of frontage on Helen Drive, subtracting 426 square feet parcel A from this property and adding it to the property at 184 Helen Drive, adding 475 square feet parcel B to this property, having been subtracted from the property at 184 Helen Drive. This will result in the frontage for lot two decreasing by 15.26 feet to 109.74 feet and the area of lot two increasing by 49 feet to 20,209 square feet. Both of the lots will have adequate area, they require frontage, proper setbacks, front, side, rear, and driveway, and have a present adequate access for buildable lot in a residence A3 zone. Should you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Timothy F. Collins, Assistant City Engineer.
And is there any question or discussion from the board members? Anybody got any questions? Okay, it looks pretty straightforward. I'll have a motion then to accept and file and endorse the plan.
Move to endorse, George.
I can't make the motion so only one person has to sign everything tomorrow?
Sure, go ahead.
I was going to, so, so I, I make that motion.
I'll ask.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and we'll go through our process.
All right, once again, trying alphabetically, Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
I recuse myself on this one.
Mr. Fay recuses himself. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. Laventure votes yes. Mr. Ross.
I recuse myself.
Mr. Ross recuses himself. Dr. Fenby.
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
We have sufficient votes. It is passed and endorsed. Thanks, Mr. Flood. Pleasure to have business with you again.
Thank you, Dr. Fenby, and thank you, board.
Haven't seen you in a while. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
All right. Next up, another A and R.
Do we have Mr. Lemos on the line?
And this is regarding Jefferson Street? Yes. Okay.
I'm not sure Mr. Lemos has joined us.
All right. Mr. Lemos, would you like to present your projected plan here?
I'm not sure he's here.
I don't believe he's here. He accepted my invitation.
I don't see him. Hello? Is somebody doing this plan?
Do you want to move it down after the public hearings? Maybe he's running late and we'll do the public hearings first?
Um, sure. Let's, let's give him a chance so he can have his say. That has to be a motion.
I'm going to move down number 3C under all the public hearings.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
All right, George.
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. Laventure votes yes. Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
He said yes.
He said yes.
Did he? I'm sorry, didn't hear. Mr. Ross votes yes. Dr. Fenby.
Yes.
Dr. Fenby votes yes.
All right, that moves us then into our public hearings and. In accordance with Chapter 48, Section 6 of MS General Laws, I hereby declare this public hearing open. The clerk will read the notice of the public hearing.
Public hearing, propose, excuse me, propose zoning amendment to chapter 650 to add a new section 38, creating the large-scale ground-mounted solar volcanic overlay district. Notice is here that given the planning board in City Marlborough, hold a public hearing on Monday, June 22nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM in Mario Hall, 34th City Hall, 149th Street, Marlborough, Massachusetts, to manage chapter 650 by adding a new section 38. Should the current state of emergency still be in effect, at that time, the hearing will be held remotely.
Okay. The hearing is conducted in three stages. We'll hear a presentation by the person proposing the amendment, then we'll hear from those wishing to speak in favor, then we'll hear those wishing to speak in opposition. Since generally people who are wishing to speak will signify their intent by raising their hands, could those people who are here for the, this part of the meeting in terms of wanting to testify, as soon as the presentation is over, let me know who you are so we can figure out how we're going to do this. And who's doing our presentation?
That would be myself, Mike Ossing, Dr. Fenby.
Yeah.
One moment. I keep getting this virus thread over the top of this.
Yay.
No one's seeing this?
We're all seeing the solar volcanic overlay district. Are you able to turn the pages?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, let's get going.
I didn't think you saw it.
Okay, we're seeing it. Mr. Ossing, if you want to tell us what we're seeing here.
Thank you, Dr. Fenby. For the record, my name is Michael Ossing, 43 Barley Road. What I'm presenting to the planning board this evening is a new section 650-38, which covers a solar overlay district. It basically encompasses the construction, operation, maintenance, and removal of the solar facility. Krista, you could move to the next slide. I apologize. The location of this overlay district is at the Hudson Street landfill. There are two parcels that come into play, parcel 30-4, which is 24 acres, and parcel 30-4C, which is 11 acres. Over the years, several councilors have indicated on numerous occasions the desire to use a landfill as a solar facility and this seemed like an opportune time to, to bring it up. So Krista, I'm not sure if you can move the slides or they, I know the planning board has them in their packet.
What, what page do you want?
The third slide with the overview of it that shows the area.
This one?
If I take control, can I drive?
Yeah, is this not the area that you, the slide?
We're just seeing the first page.
Yes, to see the cover sheet. Here we go. All right. I'm driving, so buckle in. So, so here's the overview of the two parcels, 30-4C is a smaller one in the bottom left-hand corner. It's outlined in green, 30-4 bounded by Bolton Street, Hudson Street, and the rail trail. So a little history, Council Dusset and Assistant Solicitor Pana Go Griffin, working with the mayor, drafted a solar, basically the same solar overlay district for property off of Broad Meadow and Parmenter back in 2018. It was a combination of a city-state and private partnership to put a solar facility on. The city council held their public hearing in September of 2018. The planning board conducted their public hearing in October and generated a favorable recommendation letter on October 22nd. Urban Affairs never took up the item, so the zoning request expired after its 90 days and was never pursued any further. So this change basically just modifies the work, which basically just changed the last page with some editorial corrections to just reflect the new parcels that are now, that come into play. So you ask yourself, well, why the landfill? The Commonwealth of Massachusetts encourages solar development on landfills. The Commonwealth has what's called the Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target, or their acronym is SMART, the SMART program. So it provides incentives for municipalities and developers to install solar facilities. And these financial incentives are on a sliding scale, which basically means you get in first, you get a bigger break, and you get in later, the financial gains aren't as attractive. This particular site, if it was all developed, could install up to a six-plus megawatt solar facility. That's pretty big. The city, based on a six-megawatt facility, has a potential to receive a one-time payment of $10 million for the, for the use of that property to put our solar facility on. Again, that was an unsolicited offer. The city would obviously follow the procurement process to see if there's a better deal or how we want to structure payments should we go down that route. And just stating the obvious, if it's not a six-megawatt facility and it's something smaller, the, the financial payments would be, reflect that. One of the keys to a solar facility is to have sufficient electrical capacity so national grid is contacted. And this is an ideal spot because Boston Scientific's there and Boston Scientific uses three-phase power, which is what they need to hook up a solar facility to the grid. Continuing, the vendor does all the work. And I know that sounds, what is the city's, well, the city would have to make sure we do the procurement documents, we'd have to work through engineering to make sure the DEP is satisfied that our landfill can support a solar facility. One of the other benefits, Marlborough residents, the low-income residential electric users, they're considered R2. With a facility of this type, they would receive two cents off their electric rate. So our current rate of .09 becomes .07 for the low-income residential users. And the city can specify how much of the landfill to be used for solar projects. So we can carve out area for future recreation field, which was talked at one point. I know the DPW wants a part to maintain on their premises. There's the view from the rail trail, so we can carve, it's the city's property, so the city can go out to bid for as little or as much of that parcel as they want. And I was in contact with Ann Lowry of the Mass DEP. She's in charge of the solar landfill, solar projects on landfills. She told me that there's 220 megawatts of renewable energy on landfills, of 100 landfills, and 175 of those megawatts are completed. So the state is aggressively supporting moving in that direction. So just to wrap up, the whole premises, if the city feels it's the right idea to put a solar project here, this zoning ordinance allows it. Revenues are tight right now. This would be a source of revenue for the city. We structured one time or over the 20 years of life of the project. Divides our low-income residential electric users a discount on their electricity and it supports the Commonwealth's effort, which Governor Baker and his team are really pushing to reduce our carbon footprint by the year 2050. Dr. Fenby, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions as you see fit.
Thanks very much, Mike. That's very useful. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor?
This is Dave Dusset, City Counselor.
Sure. Hi, Dave.
How you doing?
Your address.
Thank you. I think that this is a great opportunity.
You've got to give your address.
I'm sorry, what?
Your address. You've got to identify yourself with your.
My address is 17 Arcadia Circle in Marlborough.
Okay, go.
My apologies. I think that this is a great opportunity for the city as far as reducing the carbon footprint of the municipality. Also, you know, provides power generated within the municipality, so we don't have to worry about that energy being outsourced to other locations. And I think it is a clean energy source that we'll leave for future generations.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none will close that part of the public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none will close that part of the public hearing. Any discussion by the board members?
I have one question, Dr. Fenby.
Sure. Sean?
So I'm 100% behind this. I just have a question for the city councilors about the protections for the surrounding neighbors. So this is in the same neighborhood as a subdivision that was recently completed. Very nice homes almost directly across the street from where I can, from what I can see. I noticed setback requirements. Can you talk a little bit about what protections you have in mind for them when it comes before the city council?
Thank you, Councilor Fay. So in my preliminary discussions with Tom DePersio, the city engineer, Tom had provided a draft drawing of what he would think if we wanted to carve out a recreation area and still utilize the, what the old landfill building was, which is, you know, several hundred feet in. But we can specify in our procurement document any type of screening material that we would like for the residents on, whether it's on, I think it's Geek's Drive or on the back end down by the lake.
Does that answer your question, Sean?
So, so it's going to be, so it sounds like it's going to be further away from the new subdivision and closer to the, sort of the back part of the parcel? Is that what you have in mind?
Well, it, it, it really becomes what the city wants and the council wants to develop. Here's a draft drawing of potential carved-out area along the Hudson Street side for a recreation field and the path of the DPW. My cursor works, this is Geek's Lane here. This would be a potential recreation field, if that's what it's wanted. The DPW, if they want to continue to maintain this, we can develop some, I mean, if you're worried about the view, you can, again, it's the city's property, so we can articulate or set up the spec, you know, we can put a one-megawatt facility and tuck it in the corner if we want. It's really, what, what does the city want to do? This is just an opportunity to utilize the landfill and take advantage of some financial revenue for the city, address the carbon goals that the state wants to meet. And it, you know, I, I don't, I can't answer it because I don't know what the city wants. I mean, would you want it all developed? I think you'd want a good portion of it. A playground here or a recreation field costs money. The financial conditions right now, that may be a challenge, maybe 20 years from now, that may not be as a challenge. And when it comes down, you can put a recreation field in then. Same thing, you know, how much the DPW, I mean, this is just the first cut. It can go numerous ways.
So my, so I love the last proposal because it was near Southborough, which was, I thought was a great location for it. I guess my only comment would be, I don't think there's anything that you can do from a, from a layout perspective to keep it so the, so the residents wouldn't be able to see it from the second stories of their houses. But maybe sufficient screening and location when you get to that point so they can't see it from their front yards or their first floor windows. Maybe even the bottom of the street. So.
I mean, and again, we can put that in our, on the, in the bid spec. I'm not sure, you know, what type of trees to put in that are that big. I mean, I just don't know. I mean, that's.
Yeah. And this is definitely the future. I just don't know that I, I would necessarily want to see one from my front yard.
Now, that seems to be everybody. No, that seems to be everybody, everybody wants the energy, whether it's wind, solar, but no one wants to look at it. So I don't know where they think it's supposed to come from, but that's, that's a topic for another discussion.
And just one last question to the counselor, maybe Counselor Dusset may know this. Is there, I know the solar panels themselves don't make any noise, but what about the accessory buildings on this facility? I've never walked through one, so I don't know the answer to that question.
What I understand, this is Counselor Dave Dusset speaking. What I understand, most of the facilities are quiet. I have solar panels on my roof. I have transformers in my basement. I don't hear a thing when I walk by them. Usually in a facility of this size, there may be some battery backup systems, which case you may get some fans, but that would be ambient, not necessarily even the type of heating air exchanges for an air conditioner, not even something like that. So I think overall, most of the ones I've seen of this have been pretty quiet. You know, it's, it's basic electronics, no moving parts mostly.
Thanks, Dave. Are there any other questions from the board? Any questions?
Couple of questions. This is George LaVenture, Councilor's. I support renewable energy as well myself. Just a couple of thoughts. I walked the property from the, from the rail trail and going down, and I walked it from the DPW site coming, coming in. Hopefully I wasn't captured on video there. But it is, it is elevated very nicely, which means I would think that any panels that were put in could be put at low enough from the rail trail that they're not going to be obscuring or really hindering or damaging the view from there, because that really is a really nice spot to walk by. Also, along the section there, especially where the benches are and all that, that's a milkweed area that we've walked our dog there for a number of years, and we find that it attracts the butterflies. Now, whether or not that's part of the migration path with butterflies or not, it still kind of adds, adds to the ambiance. So I know you've got in there, you know, 50-foot standoff sections and all that, and whereas, I didn't measure, I made a quick assumption that the very first vent coming from the ground there was about 50 foot out, and it seemed the land was dropping down nicely. I would, I would have hoped that we could take advantage of that grade so that the view is encumbered.
Okay. Thank you, George. You have any comment to that, Michael?
No, I mean, I mean, I've talked to the city engineer as well. I mean, the view is, I think it's got to be the best view in the city. But you're right, the topography is such that it drops off sufficiently that I think, you know, in our procurement documents, we could specify just so that it covers the Bolton Street cabin roof, that's not so nice to look at from the rail trail, but leave the lake and the, the rest of it available to the residents on the rail, rail trail. So, I mean, we, again, it's our property, the city's property. We can dictate however we want, as small or as large, a solar facility, and we can dictate where we want it. This just gives us the opportunity to use all of it, and we could be expanded over time if we want to start with a small one. Who knows? I mean, that's just, again, an opportunity to take advantage of the governor's program, some financial money for the city, and following the clean energy path to reduce our carbon footprint.
Sure. Now, I know, if I looked correctly, I believe the, the way that, I'll call it a hillside, but the way that land faces is mostly pointing northeast. So it's not, because the, the bridgeway there across the reservoir is basically due north, if I remember correctly. I was just trying to get a feel if you are, not having seen one of these facilities myself, if you have a feel for what the, the sun coverage is going to be for what portion of the day. I'm assuming these are static installations that, that might be being proposed, or maybe this question is way too far in advance anyway.
So I can't help, so the unsolicited proposal that the, that we, the city received was, you know, six megawatts, they, they went out, they did their aerial surveys, because I was challenging, hey, this slopes down, or what, you know, you'd love to have a bank facing up, facing south, but this actually drops down. And they said the way they can mount solar panels, that's not an issue for them. The technology has moved or has advanced that quickly that they can take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a quick question. This is Chris Russ. You keep mentioning six megawatts. Is that for the full site? And what is sort of the estimated wattage if the recreation site and DPW site are carved out?
So to answer the first question, Chris, yes, the 30, the six megawatts is for the 35-acre site. I mean, I'm just looking at the drawing that's up on the screen, that looks like about half of it, so I would guess half. But again, that, that's all up to us. I mean, if I were going to go out to bid, I'd give a couple different proposals and lay it out and say, hey, do the whole thing, carve out this part, carve out something for the view, carve out this, and see what the vendors come back with. They're pretty eager to get into this because the incentives are there for them as well. And I want to just, so the planning board knows, and Tom DePersio knows us, we got to make sure the DEP is good with our landfill.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the meeting, and we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Does the board want to make a recommendation at this point?
Sorry, I'm getting some feedback. Let me try again. I think that we just should run through our analysis that we usually do for zoning amendments. Does it benefit the city? Is the proposed amendment otherwise consistent with the intent of the city's zoning ordinance? And is, what are the, what is the impact on the surrounding neighbors? And if, I would be prepared to make a motion on a recommendation if the, if after we did that, the board was, was satisfied with that analysis.
Okay. And how do you want to do this analysis, Sean?
Well, just, you know, go through it element by element.
Okay.
I think the first, the benefit to the city from my perspective is it provides a use that isn't otherwise available in the city.
Right. Any discussion about that? Somebody doesn't agree.
Matt does agree.
Avery's very upset at that proposal, but she doesn't have a vote.
I, yeah, I definitely agree. I think this is definitely a benefit to the city.
The, the second element, otherwise consistent with the intent of the city's zoning ordinance, I think I would view this as in orderly update and otherwise consistent.
What do people think? Phil? What do you think?
Well, overall, it looks to me like a nice opportunity and also a good way to use that property.
Right. So that makes it consistent?
I would, I would come out positive on those terms.
Chris?
I, I agree. I think this is the right piece of land to do this on.
Matt, where are you?
Right here. Both myself and Avery agree that we think that's a good plan for it, so I do agree.
All right. And.
Third element is impact on the neighbors, and I think we raised the concerns in, I think in any, any recommendation we make to the city council would encourage them to lessen the impact on that development that was so nicely finished. You know, it's, they did a great job in the development. We had no problems with them at all, and I'm sure that the neighbors wouldn't be entirely happy with being able to see that, see a solar facility from their front yards. Like I said, I don't see any way to keep the view, keep that from the view of them from their second, second story if I get the, if I'm getting the topography right. But, you know, with screening, it should be, it could be lessened certainly.
Okay. And also, you're including the rail trail in that, the need to protect that view?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Other board members? Phil? Agree with that?
I agree.
Chris?
I agree. I think in some cases, if this is a well-cared-for site, it'd probably be a little bit better looking than it is in its current condition.
Good, good observation. Matt?
Yeah, I agree. Like Counselor Austin said, that we could, you know, the city, when it comes to it, can kind of parse it out how they want, figure out some screening and whatnot. So, you know, we can see what's going on with the ball field and DPW, and then try to see what we want to do about that. So I do agree that, you know, the city should take into account the neighbors, but it looks like they've already kind of know that in advance, and we can kind of parse this however we want. So I do agree.
And George?
Works for me.
All right. So does that mean you're going to make a motion, Sean?
I will make a motion to provide a favorable recommendation to the city council with just asking them to protect the, the viewscape from the rail trail and from the, the newly completed residential development on, is it Gikas Drive? How do you pronounce that name?
G.I.K.A.S. is how it's spelled.
So we'll go with, we'll go with the spelling, drive.
Do I have a second? The second is by who?
Matt.
Matt. Okay. All right. Go through it then, George.
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yeah.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby?
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
All right. So, Mike, you can expect our letter.
Dr. Fendby and members of the planning board, thank you very much. Krista, I will now hit the stop presenting and turn the show back over to you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. All right. Oh, look, here we are. Next, we have a public hearing. And this is, again, zoning. In accordance with Chapter 48, Section 6 of the Mass General Assembly, hereby declare this public hearing. Open, the clerk will read the notes of the public hearing.
Public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment, Section 650-8, land off Valley Street, Map 82, Parcel 125. Notes hereby given upon border city Marlborough. Hold the public hearing on Monday, June 22nd, 2020, 7:00 p.m., Memorial Hall, 3rd floor City Hall, 140 Main Street, Marlborough, Massachusetts. Do not amend the zoning map established by Section 650-8. Should the current state of emergency still be enforced at that time, the hearing will be held remotely.
All right. And who is going to be doing the presentation?
Mark Evangelist.
Okay. Is he here, Mark?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, excellent. Let me know when you're ready for him.
Now.
Oh, great. Thank you. Well, can you move Matt in chairperson and committee members?
Can we get to see him? Is there some way that we can move him up so we can see him?
Uh, let me see.
Okay. All right. I guess we're not going to see you.
Well, Krista needs to do the presentation sheets. Is Krista there?
Yes, she is, and she can put the presentation sheets up. Can you hear me, Krista? Mr. Evangelist wants the sheets put up so we can look at the presentation plan.
I have shared it, and I don't know why it's not coming up. Do you not see the presentation?
No, we don't see the presentation.
Krista, do you want to send it to one of us and we can try and share it? Krista?
Yeah. And the red light is around it on my screen.
Hey, got it.
There you are.
I think there's just a really long delay tonight for some reason.
Okay. All right, Mr. Evangelist, go ahead with your presentation.
Oh, thank you. So, good evening, Madam Chairperson and Committee Members. For the record, my name's Mark Evangelist. I reside at 108 Kelber Drive. I'm a lifelong resident of Marlborough. I raised four children here. I just celebrated my 40th year as a small business owner here in Marlborough, and I'm looking to change an old, abandoned railroad bed from industrial to residential. Five years ago, I purchased this property in hopes of building a larger building for my sign business, but realized the best use would be a residential because it's surrounded by a mostly residential property. The zone change makes sense because it provides a consistent use with the adjoining residential zone parcels and cleans up a long abandoned railroad bed, which forms a long finger of industrial-zoned land surrounded by residential-zoned land. The yellow portion is all residential, and then going west is all residential, and going south is mostly residential. It's less detrimental to the area because I'm going from industrial zone to residential zone. The rezoning will allow the lots to be bigger, and part of the backyards will not be industrially zoned. Also, the homes will have more distance from the street and away from the other homes. So the rezoning keeps the city council, keeps with the city council and the mayor's vision for more housing to support downtown businesses. And majority of the neighborhoods, or at least the ones I spoke with, are pretty much all in favor of it. And I have met with Ward 3 City Councilor Christian Dumas on a number of occasions, and I believe he is very supportive of the zoning change. The railroad bed has been tested for arsenic and coal ash, and it's safe for residential use. The Conservation Board required us to do that a couple years ago. These next slides are basically the, the benefits of the rezoning that I just sort of outlined. Krista, if you want to change it. And then about a year ago, the planning board has sent a favorable recommendation for this. So this is like a, a rehash of what I was in front of the board last year for. So a few of the, a few of the residents in the area drafted up a couple, some letters in favor of this, and Council Dumas, as the Ward Councilor, received these three letters of support. And that's pretty much it right now. Well, in general, the zoning change benefits the area by cleaning up the remaining zoning anomaly over the abandoned railroad bed. And this is, I think it's great for the city. It's good for the city, and it's cleaning up. Most of these railroad beds have already been rezoned or being used in conjunction with the adjoining parcel that it's, they contain in. I do have my attorney, Mark Barbeau, he is here. Mark, are you there? In case he wants to add something?
Sure, if anybody has any questions, then I can be helpful in answering.
So that's pretty much, I want to thank you for hearing my presentation, and we can be ready for any questions going forward. So thank you, board members.
Thank you very much. All right. We will now open the public hearing for people who wish to speak in support of this. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in support of this? Is there anybody wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing. Do I hear anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Do I hear anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing. Okay, does the board have any questions about this piece of property that we've seen many, many, many times?
I have just one question for Attorney Barbeau.
I have just one question for Attorney Barbeau. Could you run through for us how the rezoning affects the overall subdivision plan? What it allows the applicant to do? You know, certainly from a city perspective and benefit to the city, you know, it appears to me to be, you know, appropriate, but I'm just curious what this does to the overall plan.
Well, essentially, I think Mark Evangelist has already kind of touched on that in a sense that because this is, these are all parts of the same piece of land, it's just zoned in two parts. And by this long finger of industrial on the backside, but by changing that to residential, the entire lot then is zoned residentially. And he can set the setbacks and such may be affected. And, you know, the houses haven't all been designed yet. There's some general, as I understand it, some general plan. But this way, the houses can be set back, part of the lots can be larger themselves. It will be fully residential lots, and that's a benefit generally. Everybody likes larger lots. And will allow him to do more with what's available there. I mean, I don't think it's doing anything detrimental at all from the point of view of zoning. And, you know, he'll have to get his other permits approved anyway. This is just a question of whether, at this point, we can clean up the zoning that, as Mark said, this is a long finger hanging there from the past. It's, I point out, it's not suitable for industrial use. So the zoning that it's already got on it can't be put into any use at all. And because it's just too skinny, not big enough to do anything from an industrial point of view. And it's right between two residential zones, one of which has Evangelist, the rest of their lot on it, and the other is land owned by others on the far side.
So I understand that it makes it more consistent. You heard our analysis of how we looked at zoning requests with the last public hearing?
Yes.
With the first prong being the benefit to the city, aside from cleaning up the map, this is a matter for the purposes of the plan, allows for greater setbacks, not an increased number of units. Is that correct?
I don't, we haven't, as I say, I don't think there's a specific plan, and I don't think it will increase the number of units. Certainly not dramatically. I think it is more about you have larger lots. If you have larger lots, this seems to me that that's beneficial to the city. The, all the other aspects of the zone and residential district would apply, that the city has already determined is the appropriate size and number of units for that residential district. This isn't giving any extra benefit from that point of view. It's simply, it's beneficial to the city because, in part, because, as you said, it does clean up the past. It also puts into use in an appropriate fashion, in accord with good planning principles, a piece of land that can't be used for, a purpose for which the past plans have long since lost any purpose for. So it's not, there's no rational way that it can be used industrially. And it fits with the vision for, that the city's already articulated, having residential on both sides. And the underlying rules for the residential district, they can't do anything more in those residential lots other than the fact that, you know, to the extent that a little more of it is residentially zoned. They still use the lots and they still, they have to still comply with all of the rules of that residential district.
Thank you.
Okay, what about the second item? Do you want to go through that, Sean? The, in terms of our...
So we can, we can run through our, the analysis of, the other board members probably have questions, too.
Well, let's, let's run through them while you've got our attention, and then we'll ask if anybody's got any other questions.
All right. So first element, does the proposed zoning amendment benefit the city?
I think that's what I just addressed.
We're getting the board members' sense here.
Members say what they want. Let's start with, let's see, Chris, you're my purview here. What do you think?
I think that, I think it is, I think it makes sense. It's part of a cleanup and kind of what Sean was asking. Like to understand is, are they proposing more, will they be able to propose more units or just nicer lots? And I believe there was some issue with the street, how it came in. There was a, I forget what it was, there was some kind of easement that was required. I'm curious if this helps alleviate that.
That was, I believe that was a rounding issue with the access road that was, that was dealt with by an easement. But I think that's, that's an entirely separate issue.
Okay.
Okay, Matt Elder, what do you think?
Oh, yeah, I think it, you know, may not be a huge benefit to the city per se, but like they said, the bigger lots, cleaning it up, you know, it looks like a bunch of the neighbors are looking forward to it, or at least agree with it. So I do think there is a benefit to the city, yes.
George?
At the very least, it does no harm. It cleans things up a bit, and so I can support that.
Okay, who have, we missed Phil?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any big benefit to the city to maintaining, maintain a piece of property as an orphan that can't be used for anything. And this is clearly, next to residential, goes through it, I see no reason not to, not to make that change.
And I agree, as long as we're not going to shove some more housing in there. We've already agreed to a limit of the housing that we agreed to, so.
The second element is otherwise consistent with the intent of the sitting zoning ordinance, which in this instance, I think is very similar to the first question. And I certainly think that it is consistent making the, eliminating that orphan zone.
Okay, let's go through. What do you think, Chris?
I agree. I think it makes total sense to get rid of it as far as industrial zone, it's unusable. So I support that.
Matt?
I agree with what everybody has already said.
Okay, George?
Yeah, there's no sense, no useful sense in keeping it the way it is.
And I agree. What about you, Sean?
Yes, I, I agree.
Yes, I think it's appropriate to make it usable again.
Okay.
So the, the third element is the impact on the neighbors and whether it fits into the neighborhood. And I'll, I'll start on this one. I would say that it, that it has much less of an impact on the neighborhood than if Mr. Evangelist was trying to go in the opposite direction and rezone the entire parcel industrial. And certainly, the residential use fits into the neighborhood with design, with design pack next door. And not to mention the single-family housing that abuts the project.
Chris?
I totally agree with what Sean just said.
Matt?
Yay.
George?
Yep, concur.
Phil?
Yes, I also.
Me too. All right. So we're all in agreement that the, our criteria seem to be met. So just that being the case, is there any further discussion or shall we go for a motion?
I will make a motion that we provide a favorable recommendation to the City Council for the same reasons we did in our, word for word with our last, the last letter that we sent on this rezoning.
Okay.
This is George, I second.
All right, let's go through our attendance then.
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder voted affirmatively. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
And Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby?
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
Right, so it passes and the letter will be sent. Thank you very much.
Board members?
Okay. All right. Next, we have a continuation of the public hearing. The public hearing, the Commonwealth Heights subdivision is, are now open, reopened. And do we have anybody here representing Commonwealth Heights?
Yes, hello, Dr. Fendby, Scott Weiss from the Gutierrez Company.
Okay, hiya, Scott. All right. Do you want to bring us up to date on where you are in terms of the next steps? We have generally given our approval verbally to the waivers that you requested. And we wonder where you are with the covenant.
We will have the covenant drafted to you this week, so we will have that to you this week. I believe you have correspondence from the Board of Health to close out that loop. Seems to be affirmative and in line with Conservation Review as well. And we will incorporate those items into the covenant. And I believe other than sort of final engineering review, all reviews are now complete. And I think the last item, we wanted some clarification on, and I believe we had the fire department saying they did not require the emergency access easement. I don't want to put words in Tom DiPercio Engineering Department's mouth, but I think if they, if the engineer, excuse me, if the fire department didn't need it, engineering wouldn't need it. So we just wanted confirmation whether we should remove that easement from the plan.
Do you have a recommendation on that? Mr. DiPercio?
Yeah, we're, we're in agreement. We were deferring to the fire department on that. We, DPW or Engineering wouldn't have any use for that. So as long as the board concurs, we'd be fine with that being eliminated from the plan.
Okay, so we will have to discuss that. The part of the issue is that we have to make our decision on July 20th. So that, all the plan has to be reviewed by then and back to us. All the covenant has to be in order by then. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, or we were going to have to extend this yet again. So we have to make a decision about that by the end of this hearing.
What, what, just to clarify, further revisions of the plan would be just to remove the, the easement, the reference to the emergency access easement. And I'm not sure what, and so I sort of need direction from you guys, whether you want me to take it off or leave it on there before I can go revise the plan.
No, I understand. We're going to talk about that. But I'm just setting the parameters, which are, there's a lot of work that needs to be done by the 20th. I'm not sure that you and engineering and legal can get it all done by then. If we don't get it all done by then, then it's going to fall over into August, which none of us want. So, all right, let's find out how people feel about the street. Anybody have strong feelings about maintaining it?
Before we start, Krista, did you see the message from Mr. Lemos?
I'm emailing him right now.
Okay, thank you. My opinion on that, my opinion on that is that I would leave that to the, I'm neutral on it. So I would say whatever the developer prefers.
George?
If it's not required by the fire department, engineering has no particular need for it. I, I have no opinion either way. If developer wants to remove it, I'm fine with that.
Phil? Phil?
I agree.
Matt?
Same, I'll yield to the experts, and they all don't really seem to have any strong opinion on it. So I don't, you know, I agree with that.
Chris?
I agree. I have no strong opinion.
All right, nor do I. If everybody wants to take it, I'd rather have us take it out than have a piece of semi-abandoned property that nobody is interested in. We've got enough of them around.
With a Knox lock.
Yeah, yes. All right. So that's your direction on that. And you already have, you already have the direction on the waivers. So what else is outstanding that we have to consider here tonight?
So one of the concerns that I had was the, sort of the history of the subdivision, which I, and the impact on the neighbors, which I hope is behind us. But I think we've had, through the course of the public hearing and through the history of this, we've had a lot of angry neighbors that have had their property damaged as a result of this development. So I just wanted to ask Mr. Weiss if he had any thoughts on how we could address this with the neighbors. We have partially through the plan with the screening, but I'm more concerned about direct impact on the property with runoff and so forth. Do you have any suggestions for how we could alleviate their concerns?
Sure. So, you know, I think there's been several things that we've done to help alleviate some of the prior concerns and address the issues, one of which is the worst of the construction really was done already because the detention ponds have now been built and there is somewhere to direct runoff. So that the need or the potential for runoff, running uncontrolled stormwater, running uncontrolled off the property is greatly diminished now. So that's an important component. One of the reasons that we are here and we want to work out the details and how to, how to move forward with this is so, so we can set all of the correct parameters with you, the board, the city, so that when construction does proceed, that is all laid out in advance and, and clearly defined. We also, as you know, shortened the cul-de-sac and reduced the number of lots so we could increase the buffer zone, which again, provides some added area of protection for the neighbors. And as you first mentioned, we also added some screening along the edge of the property.
All, all very important steps, and we appreciate your willingness to do that. We're dealing with kind of an unknown commodity here because we don't know who's going to be doing the work. We know that you're committing to the construction schedule, but we don't ultimately know who's going to be doing all of the work on this property. So would Gutierrez be willing to set aside a small fund to address any future issues that come up? Not talking about a lot of money here, you know, just. We have, we have a neighbor that has, you have washout, it ruins their lawn, they need to, they need to grade and reseed. It's going to cost them $6,000, so they're going to call you, as opposed to some unknown commodity.
Right. So we would not be opposed to a, I presume this is in addition, in addition to the bonding that would typically be required that you're looking for. So we would not be opposed to it, but we would ask that that be a condition of the approval in such a way that whether, whoever is, whether we end up building it ourselves, whether it ends up being sold or put under contract in some way, that the ultimate construction company take that responsibility because they're the ones who would be responsible for, for that activity.
That's not clear to me.
So, okay. So ultimately, something, ultimately, some, sorry, I'm guessing, does that mean, or is that...
We're all getting...
Is that better? So you want ultimately the person developing the property to be responsible for this, this, this fund?
Correct. And that seems to make most sense, that the condition will run with the land and the requirement of anyone who builds on. Correct. And that seems to make most sense that the condition will run with the land and the requirement of anyone who builds on it.
And this is contemplating a sale of this property?
Yeah, potentially, yes, yep.
Okay. But if it's not sold, then it would ultimately be with Gutierrez, the responsibility.
Right, yep.
And the covenant will cover this?
And, and we can include that in the covenant. So you're talking about either bonding or somehow setting aside some, some amount for damage to adjacent properties.
Yes.
Then you were talking about, you know, like a lawn damage or something to that effect.
Retaining wall is broken during construction, you know, something where it's, where it's related to the construction. We're not looking to improve people's property for preexisting conditions. It's only if the construction activity directly impacts their property negatively.
Yep. So something in the order, and Tom, I look to you as well, something in the order of $25,000 amount reserved for that fund, for that purpose?
That sounds about right.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. We're, we're trying to avoid the, and we've had, we've had this with other subdivisions, the, the constant parade of people complaining for legitimate reasons, you know. But in this case, we say, we already have a process in place for this. We, you know, we have them contact you or we contact you on their behalf and you, you know, you go out and look at the property and figure out what the damage is. And you, with your people on site, you may decide, you know what, it's better for us just to control it and fix it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, when we build anything, if there's a damage to adjacent property, we understand it's our responsibility to remediate.
Good.
I'm thinking you are 90% done with this project and you come to us for, you know, bond reduction and we have a, you know, they see you on the agenda and we have a gallery full of angry residents. We don't want that.
Nor do we.
All right, other people who have any comments or questions or changes that need to be made at this point?
Can we just, just to sense, is everyone on the board agree with the $25,000 amount?
Good, yes. Is everybody kind of on board with this? Yes?
Yes, yes.
And we appreciate your willingness to do this. We, we, I, we definitely appreciate your, your cooperation there.
Other issues we've got to talk about here?
Can I just add something? Madam Chair, this is Tom. Goes along with what Sean was talking about and just making sure that during construction, whoever that contractor may be, that it's going to be important that there's oversight there. And Priscilla had some comments in her letter to you that, that contains some conditions that she suggested that she and I talked about, that I think it's important that those get into the covenant. And I just want to make sure Scott has that letter from her and that those conditions related to an outside party erosion control expert be, be present during construction.
Yes. Yes, I have that, I have that letter and we are incorporating that into the, into the covenant as well.
Okay.
Is there new, new correspondence that we have not already read into the record here?
From Board of Health?
That was part of a previous meeting, so I think the board had that previously.
Right.
Yeah, there is, I believe. Do we have a, an email?
The email on the soil management thing.
4C.
I can read that if you'd like.
Yep.
Okay, read definitive subdivision application Commonwealth House requests for comment. I, Krista, the soil management plan that's presented in Sanborn Head and Associates, April 24, 2020, adequately addresses the contaminated soil concerns as part of any subdivision approval. Please include the conditions asked. One, require the applicant to paper an independent licensed site professional working on behalf of the city to review all work performed relative to soil removal by site remediation. And two, approve a recording of a deed notice on the parcel where the disposition of contaminated soils will occur. If you have any questions, please, please call John Garcia. And so a question, Madam Chair, I, I think what the engineer was referring to, was that also the thoughts of Mr. Engineer that were included in the, the Ed Plan agreement from the 7th of June regarding? That includes all, okay, that should be part of this length. Okay, thank you.
And so all of this will have to be included in your agreement with us?
Correct.
Okay. Other comments, questions, you want to add?
A question, timing. I just want to ask a question about the timing and the, the execution of the covenant. We, so we, let's say we vote on this at the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Then there's an appeal period after we, after the final approval. Do, do we, don't we, we sign the covenant at the meeting after the appeal period is up?
That's correct.
That's correct, but we want the, we want the covenant in final form, or at least in draft form by the time we vote so we can review it?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood the timing because I think the last one we did was Geek's Drive, right? Wasn't that the last one?
Yes, yes.
And that was done, that was Sandy Austin?
Yes.
Right. Who, by the way, if you're, Mr. Weiss, if you're ever looking for work to lift, she did a great job with that paperwork.
Yeah.
And, and who is that again?
Sandy Austin.
She, she's a, you know, she, she's, she's followed along very nicely with a lot of her and, and she just, she just got it. It was, we didn't have to question what she was doing.
And, and the, and Don Ryder, who was the city solicitor at the time, had very few comments on her work, which was very unusual.
Good to know.
All right.
Probably pull those documents right from the, you know, right from the registry.
In fact, I think Krista was going to send him copies of that.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so he could see them. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Phil or Chris? Anything else you'd like to see in this, Matt?
Nope, I think we hit most of it, so I'm all set with everything.
Okay, do you have anything from engineering that we need to consider at this point before we close the meeting and send him on his way?
Nope, I think you mentioned that we haven't given you our review yet, but I'll just update you that we're, we're pretty much all set with the plans. They were, as you know, resubmit a previous set and Tim's gone through this set. So we're generally ready to give our report. We don't have any outstanding issues.
Excellent. So it looks like the covenant piece is going to be, you're going to have to, that's where your hustle is going to be between now and the next month.
Okay.
All right, hearing no problems, I close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Well, it's nice to close that public hearing. All right. We had dropped 3C and let's bring that back up. Is the proponent here now?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, good. Do you wish?
One moment, let me get the A and R up. Let me know when you see the A and R plan?
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Too many cat videos.
Better than my daughter screaming as loud as she can.
All right, yes. Very stubborn tonight. There we go, finally.
We'll hear from the proponent now. What is it you wish to do?
Hi, my name is Alan Lemos. Well, first, I'd like to apologize for coming into this a little late. I had made a mistake with the time, but I'm glad I'm able to participate here again. Anyway, this is, I'm just representing the owner. I'm trying to help him out. I'm actually the architect who's going to, who's involved with them in a few different projects of his own. And he just asked me to help him out with this, with this A and R. So we hired Dennis O'Brien from Lance, O'Brien-Lance surveying to just propose this A and R plan, which basically consists of just separating these, this one parcel into two separate parcels. There's the, obviously the existing dwelling, single family dwelling there. And he uses this property, he owns a landscaping business. So he does use the, 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 the rest, the, this, this sort of open space in the area of the lot to park some of his cars. And, and I don't know whether there's been some grief, I haven't spoken to him yet about, about this with, with the building department, but I, because it's the, the elevation is kind of funny there. It's on the hill and it drops, the, the topography drops there as, in the, in the area where the cars are parked. It's been pretty well screened by the, by this, this elevation. So he just intends to keep the same use, the same exact way, but he'd like it separated so that he can keep this sort of, I guess, peace with the city. If, if there's anything ever comes up, he could be on good terms with the city. You know, just separating the lot from the, from the residential use, which, you know, it's an existing, and I believe it's an unconforming use of, in a commercial automotive, having the dwelling there. But obviously that's an existing use. There's not much that he can do with that. So what we, with this, what we asked the engineer to do, which is establish the compliant lines of the setbacks to make sure that we wouldn't have to go pursue any type of zoning variance from the zoning board, as long as we kept all the setbacks there and, and most of the other things that are required, and just get a separate lot so that he can continue to just keep, you know, the same activities as he does today. And that's pretty much it. So it looks like he's got enough frontage, he's got the, you know, he's got the lot, the lot size that's compliant. So it looks like a good situation for him to just keep the lot separate.
Thank you. We had referred this to engineering so that there wouldn't be a delay. George, can you read the letter from engineering?
We, A and R number 36 Jefferson Street, Dear Dr. Fendi, in the interest of expediency, given the summer schedule for Marlboro Planning Board meetings, I review the following A and R plan submission and offer the following comments for the Marlboro Planning Board meeting to be held on June 22nd, 2020, proposed subdivision of land 36 Jefferson Street. The purpose of the plan is to subdivide the existing property at 36 Jefferson Street, MAST 56 parcel 153 into two lots. Lot B1 containing 11,564 square feet and having 88.34 feet of frontage on Jefferson Street. There are no structures on the lot. The lot does have a gravel parking area where vehicles are being stored. Lot B2 containing 15,798 square feet and having a total of 120.01 feet of frontage on Jefferson Street. There is a residential structure on this property, 36 Jefferson Street, which was built in 1954 and predates Marlboro's original zoning ordinance. The property is two encroachments depicted on the plan, a fence encroachment and a driveway encroachment both against property currently owned by the City of Marlboro, MAST 56 parcel 152. The existing 20.8 foot, that side, that southwest side property was created in 1984 when the City of Marlboro did a 3,407 foot taking against the subject property. The current front yard setback is 33.33 feet. Close to 50 foot side yard setback on the southeast side of the property. 50 feet is the current side yard setback for the property located in commercial automotive zone. Within the proposed 50-foot wide side yard setback is shown on the plan, there exists a gravel driveway and parking area which may have issues related to zoning compliance. Both the lots have adequate area frontage and meet the lot shape requirement for lots in a commercial automotive zone. Lot B2 has present adequate access on Jefferson Street. A stone wall retain, a stone retaining wall ranging in height from one foot to six feet exists along the entire frontage of Jefferson Street for lot B1. This retaining wall impedes the ability to claim that the proposed lot has present adequate access. In a 1992 court case, citation, Paulus, Be Planning Board of Braintree, 413, MAST 359, 1992, the question was raised, quote, "Is a plan entitled to A and R endorsement if a physical impediment exists that prevents practical access but can be removed at a later date so that each lot will have access onto a public way?" Unquote, the land court ruled that in the absence of present adequate access from the public way, that the plan should not be endorsed, stating that it, quote, "It is not a right of access, but rather actual access accounts," unquote. The fact that the wall could be removed and the property could be regraded at some time in the future to provide adequate access from Jefferson Street, at this time, lot B1 does not have the present adequate access required for an A and R endorsement. Should you have any questions regarding the above, please don't hesitate to contact Timothy F. Collins, Assistant City Engineer.
Thank you very much.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Seconded.
Want to go through that, George?
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder, Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
And Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
And Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendi?
Yes.
Dr. Fendi votes yes.
All right, so, uh, I thank you very much, engineering. That was a very nice description of what we had facing us. And that being the case, I will offer the proponent an opportunity to withdraw their application if they wish. Otherwise, we will take a vote.
Dr. Fendi, I have a question about whether the person who's here as representative has the authority to withdraw.
Good question. Do you know if you do, sir?
Yes. What is the, what are my options here if I withdraw?
You withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah.
Well, if we, there's no two-year rule here. Is there a two-year rule for an A and R? I don't think so, is there?
I don't think so.
I think, I, I think, you know, he's, he's not here, I don't think, I don't think that Mr. Lemos is here as counsel or the engineer.
So in that case, let's take a vote. I'll have a vote on the proposed A and R then.
I'll make a motion that we deny the, the application for the A and R plan and encourage the applicants that work with engineering on bringing the topography of the land and in condition that it can be approved.
Go ahead, George.
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay?
I vote yes, and just to be clear, a yes vote is to deny the plan.
That was my vote to deny the plan.
Yes. Now, Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
And Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
No.
Yeah, Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendi?
Yes.
Dr. Fendi votes yes.
All right, so good luck on revising the plan. Engineering will work with you around this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Gooddale Estates. And they provided a whole pile of information as well as giving them a letter from engineering. So would you like to read the letter from engineering?
We, Gooddale Estates, bond reduction, Dear Dr. Fendi, pursuant to the request from the planning board on June 8th, 2020, the engineering division has reviewed the status of construction for the completion of the roadway at the above referenced subdivision. As of this date, the following work will need to be completed as scheduled by the developer. The retention base- The retention basin is only 90% complete. The gas service needs to be installed. Water and sewer services for the lot number seven need to be installed slash relocated. Gravel-based course for the sidewalks need to be installed, scheduled for mid-June 2020. Paving of sidewalks, binder pits and top course, scheduled for late-June 2020. Paving the roadway, top course, scheduled for late-June 2020. Installation of roadway bond, scheduled for September 2020. Installation of street trees, scheduled for September 2020. Installation of street signs and line painting. As-built plans need to be developed, scheduled for September 2020. Accepting plans will be developed during the one-year maintenance period. Miscellaneous cleanup will take place after the one-year maintenance period. The street signs and street lighting, by the way, are required prior to house occupancy. The status of the bond to secure the completion of the subdivision is as follows. It was determined in December of 2019, the initial cost to construct the subdivision was approximately $700,000. At that time, with some of the work to construct the subdivision having been completed, it was ultimately determined the cost to complete the subdivision was $352,000. Given the quantity of work required to complete the subdivision, based on the cost to complete this work, based on MAF DOT weight bid prices for roadway construction, I have determined that the cost to complete the remaining work for this subdivision is $205,000, a reduction of $147,000. Based on the cost of the work completed to date, security in the amount of $205,000 should be posted to secure the completion of the above referenced subdivision. Refer to the attached estimate breakdown for details. The status of approval of the definitive subdivision is as follows. Definitive subdivision approval, November 14, 2016. Expiration, two years of original subdivision approval, November 14, 2018. Extension of subdivision approval granted on November 5th, 2018, to November 24, 2019. Extension of subdivision approval granted on October 21st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020. Based on the work remaining to complete the subdivision and the schedule proposed by the developer, a six-month extension of the subdivision approval to complete the work and begin the start of the one-year maintenance period would be prudent. Should the work to complete the subdivision be completed before the end of the six-month extension, the one-year maintenance period would begin sooner. Should you have any questions regarding the above, please don't hesitate to contact me. Timothy F. Collins, Assistant City Engineer.
Okay, I'll have a motion to accept and file and reduce the bond as indicated.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby.
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
Okay, thank you very much, engineering. And where do we stand with that gas line? That they were having trouble with?
We haven't got an update as to the schedule of that. So we're still on the basis of he intends to put it in that alternate location.
Okay.
I have a quick sequence question on it. The paving of roadway, the top course, is that something they do this early on in a project like that? Where they're running some of the larger machinery around, going to destroy it?
Not ideally. That's something that I brought up earlier, but they had some, well, the gas main issue, and they had another issue where the utility stubs weren't in the exact right location. So they had to put off paving the top course anyway. So I think that's for, and it's going to happen in the interim. So I think it's going to work out better for us, but, but you're right. Ideally, you wouldn't want, we wouldn't want it to be paved so early when there's still all the lot construction still going on.
All right, let's see. Next, we have sign variance requests.
Barbara, excuse me, you need to vote on the extension request?
Uh, oh, we didn't vote on the extension. Thank you. Good catch. I'll have a motion to grant the extension as indicated in the engineer's letter.
So moved.
All right. Want to go through it, George?
Absolutely. Calling in alphabetical order, Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder enthusiastically votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
And Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby.
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
All right.
May I, may I ask for confirmation of who made the motion and the second?
Matt Elder made the motion.
Chris Beckerman.
Thank you. And just to clarify, it's December 31st of 2020?
Yes. All right. Next up is signs. We have a sign variance for the Shell station, and we have some correspondence on that, which, do you have that, George?
I have a, I have an email.
Yes.
From Melissa Ira. Subject line, "Public hearing input for Lincoln 431."
Excuse me? Barbara, is that the correspondence you meant to ask?
No.
Which one are you?
Which one I emailed you late in the day? Do you have that?
You did. Hey, I want, I could probably find it. I do have my email open. Late in the day, I was probably out trudging through.
It was like 5:20 or so.
Yeah, all right. We're getting there. Yep, I do have it. Nope, hang on, that is for the later discussion.
Okay, I've got it. I will, I will read.
I don't have it, though.
All right. This is from Jeffrey Cook, the building's commissioner. Since Tim Collins discovered the plan submitted to the inspection services with the sign application had errors, that the plan misidentified the area as Business Zoned District B, when it should have been identified as Neighborhood Business NB, zoning district. Add Tim Collins' 200-foot radius, then the location of the new requested sign at 431 Lincoln Street does not need a variance from the planning board for 526. The sign is not an as-of-right sign in that it will require a special permit from city council. However, since the sign location is over the minimum distance of 200 feet from the nearest abutting residential zone, it will not need relief from the planning board. So I am reading this as we have no jurisdiction. Is that how you were reading it, Mr. Fay?
Yes.
All right. So, thank you very much, Mr. Fay, but we have no jurisdiction here.
Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Do we have to accept that letter and place it on file?
Yes.
Motion, so moved.
Seconded.
Second, all right. Go through it then, George.
All right. Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yeah.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby.
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
All right. Well, that was easily handled. Unfinished business, we have the draft policy discussion around the zoning and variance requests. This was our ongoing discussion of how we are expecting things to be in order before we make decision on those things. And we did send a letter to the city solicitor asking for some assistance with this. We sent that mid-April. Subsequent to that, we heard nothing for a long time, and then prodded. We heard from the solicitor yesterday, both Sean and I, yeah.
Yeah, Friday, and then I followed up with, with the city solicitor today. I think Jay's on, in the meeting with us, too.
Is he?
I believe so.
Jay, are you here? No.
Hi, yes.
All right, good. Thank you. So our understanding is that at this point, our best bet is to continue negotiating with you, that Mr. Fay and I should talk with you over the summer, trying to come to terms with how we should best word this. And could you please explain to the board what some of the issues are?
Actually, can I, is it all right if I just explain quickly? Because I, we had about an hour-long conversation. I just wanted to.
All right, good.
The date, so the, so the, I think our, in my follow-up conversation with the city solicitor today, I think the better approach is to publicly articulate our standard for how we review variance, sign variance requests, and publicly state the, how we, the standards we follow for making recommendations on zoning amendment requests. We want to send those standards to the legal department so they can review to make sure that, that our articulated standard is correct. And as part of that overall public notice, notice to applicants, we also state our view that we're going to consider the condition of the property on the ground. So if it's a sign variance request, we're going to look at the entire sign package for the property. You know, the example that we talked about in our conversation was the gas station on Main Street, where they were coming in for a variance for a sign, but they had A-frame signs all over the place. Well, we consider the signs in total, so it's appropriate to do that. For the rezoning requests, we have our articulated standard and where our consideration of the condition of the property comes in is in our third element of the impact on the neighbors and whether it fits into the neighborhood. So as long as we make our position consistent with our overall way we review requests, then we're okay, which isn't what the current policy we sent down did. I think the concern of the legal department, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, was if we were making decisions based on the past sins of the applicant, that that could get us in trouble.
That's correct.
We have a little bit of work to do. We have a little bit of work to do, and I think, I think we're all on the same page.
Good.
I, I agree with, I, I, but we spent a lot of time going through it, and I agree with their assessment of what we should do as a policy statement.
And I, I thank you, Jay, for the, for your help on this. You know, once we got your attention, you did a really good job, spoke with me at length. You spoke with Sean, then you spoke with Sean again. So I think we're on the right track, so.
Of course, that's, that's what we're here for. So, yeah, we encourage you to continue having those conversations. And I look forward to talking to you more in the future.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll be working on this, Sean?
Yeah, who, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to draft the, you know, take another stab at drafting, and maybe we want to figure out who are, who's going to work on this to present to the planning board when we're, when we're ready. I'm, I'm, I think we articulated our standard on the zoning amendments pretty clearly, going back to when we did the, when we had the projects with the, the senior living center up in John Delly's property, up on the north side of town. I think we've been very consistent since then. I think less so with the variance requests, that probably needs a little bit more work.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm quite willing to work with you on this, and let's see what we can get done by September.
Okay. I think, Jay, we picked September as our goal, right?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Good. And speaking of September, I talked with the mayor today and told him that, you know, we probably are going to be doing this remotely for the next two summer meetings, and that we will take a look at September as a possibility for going on-site, depending on how things are at that point, so. He did say that he appreciates the fact that we've been, made the whole thing so accessible to people and that we might want to continue doing this in the fall, even if we do go to an on-site situation so that people will find it more convenient to tune in when we've got a public hearing, if they have some access to issues and still want to testify. So, so, yeah, that sounds good.
My, my only concern about September is, you know, even in, in, you know, summer camps, they're talking about groups of 10 to 12 kids.
Right.
I don't know that we, that anyone has seen the final recommendations for schools yet, but my concern would be if we get a public hearing like one for the McGee Farm, and we're packing 40 people plus us in that small room, that'd be not a good situation for us, with no air circulation in there.
Yeah, we did talk about that, and the fact that it may be that just the board would be meeting with the public, rest of the public hearing being on a, by, by remote, so.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, it remains to be seen. It's still three months or two months off, so. We'll make a decision as we get closer, but that might be a goal that we could work toward.
Would, would we have, would we have remote participation options, say, if we weren't feeling well that day?
Yes, that would be it, yeah. We would move more toward the, where the council is doing it. Some people will go in, some people wouldn't, you know. We would work it out. Because it may be that, you know, it's more convenient for some people to be at home sometimes, and other times, it might be helpful for Krista to have somebody next door to help figure out what's going on.
As you heard what my house was like earlier today, I would have no problems going in and sitting next to Krista.
Good man. All right, we have one more piece of business from the chairs business. And this is another tidying up piece. One of the things that Krista and I have noticed in passing is every time we have a development, since we don't have them all the time, she says, "Are we doing this this way or this way?" And I go, "I think we did it this way," and then we go back and forth, and then we make a decision. And she's got a list of ways of doing things. Engineering, you, you probably have a list of how, how we handle things as well, in terms of timelines, what comes first, what comes second. And Krista has given us one list about that. It just seemed like we probably better get all lists and make sure that we're doing it the same way every time. And I was going to ask if a couple of people would take charge of trying to collate these lists and figuring out what we're doing. I talked to George about it. And Chris, I mentioned in passing, I was going to draft you to do something if you would be willing to help out.
Sure, this isn't a problem.
Okay. So could you start it off, Krista, by sending what you've got to all of us? I mean, Chris and George will pay particular attention to it. And, and if you could also, from engineering, that would be great.
Yep.
So just to be clear, I mean, in addition to, for example, definitive subdivisions, you, we also want to articulate what we do for street acceptance, for example, generation of the covenant or tripartite agreements, like the whole.
The whole thing, the whole package, yeah. Yeah, because we, we pretty much can go down the straight line. It's when things require a little diversion that we get, we go, "Oh, then what?" So if we get it all in one straight package, I think we'll all feel a lot better. And then if we really do a good job, we can give it to the developer and say, "Here." It's just how we do it.
What, what about open space developments and preliminary submissions?
Yeah, I would think that that would also have to be in that.
But that, those should probably be entirely separate timelines, not, because I think what, trying to do everything in one would be far too complicated to.
Okay.
Can I show you? Let's see if I queued it up. I, I sent you. Got so many things open. Oh.
It's okay, Krista. We'll, we'll accept that we're getting it. Did you want to limit it? Is that what you were saying, Sean, or?
No, what I'm saying is that we should have one for the preliminary submissions. We should have one for open space developments, and we should have one for traditional, well, traditional subdivision. traditional subdivision plans.
All right. All right, well.
Well, the timeline that I sent you this afternoon has both with a preliminary submission and one without, the two timelines.
Right, okay. All right.
The open space one is different. That's, you don't, that should probably be separate.
Yeah. But if we can get them all in front of us, we can see what we're doing, and make a decision as to how we can proceed. So let's put that on the agenda for next time, and between now and then, maybe if, if Chris and George could take a look at it and maybe get back to me about what you're thinking, then we can have a discussion about what we want to do.
Has the COVID, the COVID, the COVID state of emergency has changed some of our timelines, though? So we, the one we're currently working on may have some different deadlines. Or did I misread, did I misread that? When the?
I think that there was some question about whether it applied, it specifically stated things such as permits. But we've been working with our one developer with the Commonwealth Heights, just getting extensions, which is what the recommendation of the city solicitor was.
So I'm more concerned about appeal periods. In staying of appeal periods, that was more of my, if that has been, if there's any order in place with the state of emergency that, that would affect appeal, the appeal period after approval.
That would be a question for the solicitor's office. I'm not sure.
So that's among the things, why don't we just put that down as among the things we want to consider when we put this whole package together? Okay. If there's nothing else, I would be happy to hear from Mr. Elder. It's my motion.
We have to accept and place on file everything that's under item 12.
Seconded.
Want to go through the list?
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yea. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendy.
Yes.
Dr. Fendy votes yes.
And we have one more motion you can put in place there, Mr. Elder.
Move to adjourn. I second.
Uh-huh. And?
All right, Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yea. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture is very enthusiastically voting yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. And Dr. Fendy.
Hooray, yes.
Dr. Fendy writes, yes.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's been a long meeting and a very productive meeting, and thanks to Engineering and Krista. Very good. Thank you.
Yes, Tom, great work today. Tim did great work today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.